We're now in session for our Tuesday, October tenth, uh, monthly meeting for twenty twenty-three. Uh, the first thing we do on our agenda is office, we have a vacation, I'd like to ask all the people. Please, they like us. Heavenly Father, be come before you, dear God, as homeless we know, and I would like to God that you to bless the members of this board, the American Board of Alderney, dear God, that we make the right decisions for our city. Dear God, we actually look up on our nation, dear God, as we go through, dear God, overseas and in our own country, dear God, we actually bless our leaders of our country, dear God, that they will lead and guide us in the right direction, dear God. This is your son, Jesus, man, that we pray, amen. Amen. Let me stand for the place, please.
I pray that the nations through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
As you may have noticed, our vice chairman, Ms. Carolyn Plankton, I was tonight, she did have a, she tweeted, I ain't gonna get me working and being busy as usual, but I will say on her behalf, I want to say thank you to all of your supporters, National Night Out, I know this is her baby, she was in full steam, a hundred percent in it, it was a very, very successful event, so thank you for your participation, we'll keep Miss Plank, we'll keep an eye on her, make sure she's well. We have, um, before we approve the minutes, we have a couple of people I just want to stand and stand and be recognized, okay, Mr. Aaron Stewart, you stand and recognize this, I do industrial recruiter with IDB Board, uh, Aaron has a vast history with TBA, we've worked projects together throughout the years, uh, and we'd be glad to have him aboard. Thanks, officer. We welcome him. Um, also, we get to the, our other gentleman, our recognitions tonight, but I do want to recognize Aaron because he, I know he came to the meeting so he can make sure we know, put a name to the fact. Um, next on our agenda, we have approved of the minutes for our regular meeting, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions, concerns from the Board of Alderney?
No question?
I hear most, I hear second. If it moved in five seconds, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. Minutes approved. Now, we want to recognize Mr. Albert Richardson tonight, if you come forward, Mr. Richardson, just, you just stand next to the podium and drink, come with him. Tonight, in spite of some of the things that we do see going on across the country and across the globe, when people ask for war, we want peace. When people look for division, we ask about unity. And when people are concerned in our community, we always stand there. So tonight is that example, looking out for people, Mr. Albert Richardson went all of his way and above the call of duty in helping a citizen who was stranded, after many, many people passed by, he took the time to make sure she was okay and assist her, uh, in her hour need. So for that, let's give him a big round of applause. And his supervisor with him tonight, he's one of the City of Brown's employees, works at Public Works, can you give some brief description of what happened, Albert or either one of y'all?
I just saw this granny lady sitting on the side of the road, and I don't mind by helping nobody. She was a elder lady, so I know she needs some help. All I did my best, did what I could do.
And that's all we ask. That's all we ask. So tonight, in recognition of that, we have a certificate for outstanding citizens' work. The City of Brown will recognize Mr. Albert Richardson, an outstanding example of good citizenship in the community and demonstrating good conduct and kindness to others. This day signed by myself and Mr. Cordrick Stewart. Let's give him another round of applause. Thank you. You know, public work is a lot of complaints, I think it's all of it, but tonight, I want to say thank you. Uh, also tonight, we have another young man who's, uh, who stepped up to the plate and who's, uh, come forward, and you may have seen him in your ward. You may not have seen him, you might have known who he was, or you might not know who he was. But I'm gonna tell you something, Mr. Dylan Lyons, I'm gonna come around. If you meet me at the podium, give this, give it. Dylan comes to us in the form of our co-reporting officer. When you talk about, uh, complaint department, this is a complaint department. So, but somebody's got to go out there and deal with the issues, make sure the ordinance is enforced, make sure we find a balance between who we, uh, who we're enforcing, it's a common sense practice. Dylan has shown himself to be really good at doing what he's doing, he's learning, he's writing letters, he's going out, he's riding the boards and making a difference in our community. So tonight, we want to swear him in as our co-reporting officer. Would you raise your right hand? I, state your name.
I, Dylan Lyons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And obey the law.
And obey the law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Tennessee.
And the State of Tennessee.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the City of Brown.
Of the City of Brown.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithful.
Faithful.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the position.
Of the position.
Of co-reporting.
Of co-reporting.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Sincerely, God.
Sincerely, God.
So we both sign this over office, and then, uh, tomorrow, we give him a badge. If Grant and I couldn't, just be ready, he's gonna, he's gonna work all over the next several months, I think when Grant sees you rolling around again with your visiting code, we, uh, good guy. We, we, and I'm, I'm trying my best to hire people younger than me, um, so when I'm having an opportunity to take and groom somebody up, uh, but we, we, we're happy to have you a part of our family. You like to say anything?
Like you're ready.
All right, let's get into some of these planning ordinances. Okay, the first orders we have on our, our agenda tonight, in the first reading, of course, you know, all our ordinances have two readings, which in, in the second reading, we'll have a public hearing, which people can comment or ask questions concerning a particular order. This is the first reading. The first, and these, um, these, uh, ordinances and recommendations have come from the planning commission, and I know Timothy said, well, gosh, we don't always see this in order. So in order, uh, in the light of transparency, you always hear the ones that get favorable recommendation from the planning commission. But based on recommendation, Jonathan from Shelter, that is, uh, of all the different changes we see going on in our community, we want you to have the information. Uh, sometimes, high level, I'll tell you something, planning is a, is a different analog to owners, but it's very important, uh, that we have things in order as we look at land use plans, interim design guidelines, transportation stuffs, all these are things we're gonna use the data to make sure our community looks like it, we want it to look, so we maintain our heritage and integrity. All right, so the first one here is orders number ten zero zero six. It's an order to amend the City of Brown's municipal zoning map, rezone the tax parcel zero five six, Haywood County Tax parcel parcel zero seven five, group D, from R one A, which is medium distance, single family, to R three, high density, high density residential, located in intersection of Raven Hill Lane and Hatchet Avenue, owned by Bobby Matthews Junior and Tara Matthews. This did receive the recommendation, did not, the planning commission did not recommend that this ordinance be taken up by the City Council and afford a favorable recommendation. Uh, the father property will be reclassified from its current zoning designation to proposed zoning designations due to spot zoning. Uh, so the planning commission did not recommend the father property be reclassified, uh, and this is order number ten zero zero six. So the rest of it is just legal language, uh, this is the first reading, orders number ten zero zero six. Turn the banks, everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so at this time, like to entertain the motion, we approve ordinance number zero, ten zero zero six, although it did not receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. So it's up to us to go up and ask. Do I hear a motion to approve ten zero zero six? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? This is the rezone, this parcel from R one A to R three, from medium distance to single family to high density.
And they should not do that.
Yes, to not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to not, basically, to not.
I see.
Sorry, conversation questions. So the fact, let me make sure we clear, this is new for us. With the, the board is in favor, voting in favor to not recommend it. We vote this down.
I see.
All right, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, and make sure everybody's here clear, okay? Uh, we, we, we're looking at a non-favorable or a down vote or not to approve, orders number ten zero zero six, the vote we have on the table. That's clear as much, right?
If, if we could, let's go back and clear it up, and
Please.
The, the motion needs to be to, to pass, to pass ordinance number ten zero zero six.
That's clear.
And if nobody makes the motion, or nobody seconds it, then it dies, and then we're, we're not confused.
Right, okay, thank you.
If you could rescind, honor the wishes of your motion and rescind your second.
Do I hear rescind, rescind? Okay, rescind, all right, so.
Now we entertain a motion to
To approve.
Ordinance ten thousand.
Although it did receive the non-favorable recommendation, do you want to approve this order? Thank you.
I'm making motion, we approve, uh, ordinance one zero zero six.
Okay, all right.
We don't want the ordinance to pass, we don't need to make a motion.
Are you wanting to pass, you want, you want it to, uh, receive a, a pass vote, based on the recommendation of the planning commission?
It, 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 this document is saying that they do not recommend it, how, however, if, if we pass the ordinance, then it rezones the property.
Yeah, thank you, I'm, this is new for us, it's new for us, just bear with us. So.
So, so nobody's
Okay.
The ordinance one zero zero six.
Thank you. We'll get it right before we
Well, we got several tonight, I think we got it right.
We've never done this before, I'm, I'm serious, anytime we see a, 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 a ordinance come from the planning commission, it's got a, a favorable vote, this is the first time they've said no. So, do we want to approve this ordinance, allow this change from R one A to R three? So, do I hear a motion to approve that, although it did not receive a favorable recommendation? Do I hear motion? Do I hear a motion on ordinance one zero zero six to approve? Hear none? Orders fail, like, like a little first, okay, so, it will go again. Orders to amend chapter one, the text, okay, this is, this is a little different, this is a little better, all right, so, this is, um, Ms. Bashley, Shelton will be able to join us by Zoom call? He's on a meeting, okay, so I'll tell you, um, they have to be, uh, approved their order because it's ten zero zero seven, so I'm gonna try to explain as best I can, all right. So this is a text amendment, and the municipal zoning orders for the City of Brown, Tennessee to include the public requirements. This did receive a favorable notice from, uh, from the planning commission, all right, so what this does, and I, I think this, this is my personal opinion, I never try to get my opinion involved, but this is, just gets more transparent to include public notice. There's a mail notice, item number one, there's a sign notice, item number two, and then there's B, C, D, and, uh, E. What this, um, text amendment does, if there's a rezoning, uh, in particular, of a, a piece of property, um, that they have a proper notification, at least fifteen days prior to the public hearing, before the governing body affected property owners and neighborhood organization within five hundred feet of the parcel under construction, um, needs to have public notice. So this is something we talked about in our planning commission, Jonathan's nodding yes, because we talked about it before, so gosh, you know, we have people that may and may not come to the brief paper, may and may not come to the planning commission, and may and may not come to the city council meeting, but if there's a property in their backyard, next door to them. So what this does, this text amendment requires that it have a mail notice, a sign notice, size and type, sign permanent fees, and a content of notice. So this specifically says that the public will be notified, and this is the first reading of, uh, orders number one zero zero seven. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second? They're moved in five seconds, are there any questions or concerns? Hear none, let's call for vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. All right, so, ordinance number one zero zero eight, um, rezone from R one to general commercial, all right? If I'm, if my memory serves me correct, it did, this did not receive a favorable recommendation. Once again, here we go again, I can hear one zero zero six. This is an order to amend the City of Brown's municipal zoning map, um, from low density to general commercial. This is located on Clear Drive by clearance. This is, um, I think this is to put a communication style in, if I'm not mistaken, but they want to rezonate from R one, which is low density residential to general commercial, and the, the planning commission did not approve this, but they sent it up to us anyway. So, once again, this is like one zero zero six, all right, um, I hope that's clear, uh, so here we go, so, and do I hear a motion to approve one zero zero eight? Do I hear a motion to approve one zero zero eight on the first reading? Hear no motion? Orders die for lack of motion. Please, ask.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Banks?
Yes, sir.
So, so the zoning board has gone in and looked, uh, they getting information from Jonathan and L R K on potential, what this land use map is gonna look like, or they just pray that it's a, it's a violation, it's a spot zoning, is that what it would be?
Well, I, I know, I've led Jonathan, and I, I, I don't go to the planning commission meetings unless called.
Jonathan, he been, he been waiting for like three months. He been coming to these meetings for three months. All right, do you?
Speaking of best practice, so Jonathan Flint with L R K.
Okay.
Um, well, and currently, uh, future land use plans, since it is a process not to utilize for, um, report rezoning decisions, um, we provide our opinion, uh, regarding rezoning, but we have to utilize the existing zoning and develop or make these regulations as they are today, uh, until that future land use plan is published and is adopted.
Okay, that was official.
Yeah, there we go, best practices, right?
Best practices, all right, so that died for lack of motion. Uh, good question, all in the vision. Um, now we have orders number one zero zero nine. This is a rezone, some requests rezone from R one to R two, this is known as a fuller property. Uh, R one is low density, single family, uh, they want to go to a medium distance, R two, to locate the intersection of State Route nineteen and the bypass, fifty-four, or West Main Street. Um, this is another one with the recommendation by our planner, uh, Mr. Shelton Merrill, um, has recommended the father property not be reclassified from its current zoning designation to proposed zoning designation due to spot zoning. We know we're gonna look at mixed-use communities, and in this particular, um, instance, there's, this classified as R one, so that's what, that's the recommendation that the planning commission that it stay R one. Once again, this is just like one zero zero six and one zero zero eight. Is there a motion to approve one zero zero nine, which should be to, to approve from R one to R two, but the planning commission had not recommended we take that up? All right, so is there a motion to approve orders number one zero zero nine? Is there a motion to approve one zero zero nine? Okay, hear none? Orders fail for lack of motion. Well, we'll get Shelton, we should be able to, all right. Orders, uh, number ten ten, this is orders to amend the official zoning map of Brownsville, Tennessee by zoning annexed property, R one. This is a tract of land, this, um, has a partial map description, if we look at it, this is an annexation request. Uh, it does, looking from what I see, it does fit with the surrounding, um, zoning that is being asked, but it's not in city limits. So of course, you know, when we bring, we annexing, it's only by the property owner's request, uh, and then after we, if we approve, then we have to look at our planning services. Uh, some of the services in this particular public annexation, unlike some of the others we've annexed in, adds adjacent sewer and water, uh, things of that nature. It also says in this ordinance, any other, like, uh, taffies and things like that, that come up as a cost factor, would be, be the price, would be paid the cost of the development. But good news is, it has adjacent sewer water, gas, and electricity, so we've seen before where BEA had to come in and be specific about the planning services. So this is an annexation request, um, I think it did receive a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. Um, of course, we be annexing property, we providing services, and, uh, then people pay property taxes to get those services. So this is a large tract of land that was, uh, being requested on the first reading to be annexed in, is R one, which is low density, single family housing. So with that being said, uh, do I hear a motion to approve orders number ten ten? So moved, do I hear a second? If they're moved in five seconds, are there any questions or concerns? Okay, any who's called for vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. All right, orders number ten eleven. Now, orders number ten eleven, on, once again, the front, first reading, this is a, a language of, uh, tech, it's not a, it's a text amendment, but it's more of a definition of clarification. So this orders is to, in a general, this is by, in a new section, considering the definition of manufactured homes and deleting the existing language found in chapter two, section two oh five, manufactured homes. So what this does, gives a little length of the section in section two, um, M, manufactured homes, this gives a more definitive description, and, uh, there's some, there's a lot of technical things in here about, like, section three, said hitches and torn apparatus, the axles must be removed, the roof must be pitched so there at least two inch vertical rise, with each twelve inches of quarrelled running. Very, um, very detailed, this was drafted by a city planner, um, Mr. Shelton Merrill. Um, and this is because we see more and more requests for different types of housing, so once again, um, this received a favorable recommendation from the planning commission because they feel that we need to be more specific about adopting the orders that we can all stand unified on, that defines what a manufactured home is. I, you won't believe the phone calls I get about, this is not a manufactured home, this is a manufactured home, this is R B, this is not, this is a trailer, this is not. So this will clear up some of that language for us, it'd be first of many, um, that we'll see. So with that being said, I have orders number one zero one one, that gives a more definitive definition of manufactured homes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion, do I hear a second? All right, are there any questions or discussions or concerns? We will see, this, these orders will come again for a second reading, the ones that haven't received the motion to move, so at this time, we'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. Ten eleven passes. Resolution, now we're in resolution, resolution don't require one reading and more action items for the board. Uh, the resolution for City of Brown to apply for safety partners grant, this is a grant, um, for safety equipment to be used for the City of Brownsville. It was, um, it's a, the state grants come through public entity partners, and there were reimbursements up to two thousand dollars, uh, after the city submits invoices at least four thousand dollars. So this is a, more or less means halfway on the safety equipment, um, Ms. Bashley, is that, that's pretty much it, okay, I want to make sure I I hear a motion to approve resolution ten zero, ten fifty three, do I hear a second? Second, are there any questions or concerns? Okay. Hear none, we're calling for vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, all in the vision, would you, do you have a poll?
Before we move too much farther past the ordinances, you know, I, I think it'd be, uh, be a pretty good idea if we'd have the, the chairman of zoning board here.
Okay.
Maybe when we, when we deal with ordinances.
Yes.
Or representatives from the zoning board.
Yes.
Uh, to answer any questions that, that we may have, we, we always to the union, we can hear a lot of, a lot of things, sometimes we talk to the individuals, but
Sure.
I think it'd be great to have, to have one of them.
Well, the, the plan was to have Mr. Shelton Merrill here, we talked earlier, but he had a conflict with another meeting, another city council meeting, so we'll, we'll, we'll get him on, on, on his calendar for the second reading. You know, so that's why I was saying, I'm gonna get Shelton, because we've never had this many orders concerning planning, and we've never had ones that did have a non-favorable vote, so this is new for us, but we, in order to try to be official, to be transparent, we just thank y'all for your patience and bearing with us, we, but we want to get it right, uh, but you're right, we're gonna put Shelton up here, he, that, that's what he's paid for, and until Jonathan's paying the time from a best practices standpoint. All right, but thank you for coming, all right, uh, good point, point well taken, and we'll be, don't, noted in advance, all right. Uh, the next resolution is ten fifty four, is a state and local cybersecurity grant. The cybersecurity grant will, um, skipped over, all right, ten fifty four, this is another grant opportunity to come forward to City of Brownsville, it's a forty-six thousand dollar, one hundred and fifty dollar grant, requires twenty percent match from the City of Brownsville. This is to buy more, um, security equipment, you know, that's the greatest risk we have of beyond our national disasters, is a cybersecurity. Uh, the cybersecurity grants come from FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security for the benefit of, for the citizens of the City of Brownsville. Uh, this is a forty-six thousand dollar grant that will match twenty percent from us, and this will go to our IT department. All right, do I hear a motion to approve resolution ten, ten fifty four? Motion, do I hear a second? If they're moved in five seconds, are there any questions or concerns? Okay, hear none, we're calling for vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Those opposed, name. Okay, all right. So, we know we have, we've had discussions around, uh, resolution number ten fifty five. This is a resolution to amend the City of Brown's personnel policy, what this does, it just allows those who have retired to, the opportunity to come back and serve, meeting certain criteria. The criteria is follows, pass the physical fitness standard, and this is for first responders, okay, and it complies with the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System rules, if an employee is granted a waiver. So what we're doing is, we still have this, these mandatory retirement ages, but in certain situations, we have an opportunity for a waiver, okay, so you want experience, dedicated, loyal people, um, as first responders, and we appreciate their service. So this particular resolution says that the, um, the first responder requests in this waiver, after retirement age, pass the physical fitness standard, meet the reference qualification requirements, complete forty hours of post-certification, the recommendation approved by the chief and approved by the mayor. This waiver must be approved annually at the end of the employee's birthday month. Okay, we had a good discussion around there, I think it's a good way to, to do it, all right, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve resolution number ten fifty five.
So, uh, the board asking questions.
Yes, yes, sir, do I hear a second? Second, all right, all in the vision, you recognize.
So, so I don't see on this ordinance where it says anything about fire, firefighters, and it's just
Right, and, and, and
Only, only the police department.
I mean, when, when we had a meeting and discussion, I think all we talked about was the police department, is it not?
Yes, but it, but the, but the resolution does say first responders, so, but this is more specific for the police department.
It says first responders, but then it, then I said, including but not limited to police officers, police administration, and, and, and the reason that I narrate it now is because we got the weapons qualification and stuff like that, and firefighters wouldn't, wouldn't have to go through it. So if, if we want to amend it for firefighters, we can do it, but we don't need to do it, um, not the rest of it.
I just, I just want to make sure we, uh, saving that firefighter stuff.
See you, chief, appreciate it. All right, so we have a motion, a second, any other, other discussion? Hear none, we're calling for vote, all in favor, let it know by signing by. Opposed, name. Resolution ten fifty five passes. All right, and now we're down to our road block section, um, our first one is a road block for Hatchet Fall Festival for the Delta Harrison. Uh, it's, it's, that's, that's a making a request, but you know the fall festival, uh, Brownwood Court Square will be blocked, East Main, one block down to West Main, one block down to Washington, one block south and north, left, at North Washington, all the way to College. Starting time, of course, it starts setting up early in the morning, five it goes to ten P M. This is for our vendors, for our food vendors, and, uh, that is, uh, insurance, certificate of property presented with all sorts of life insurance. It's some, that'll sign me. All right, tell us what you got.
Uh, this is standard, we do it every year, it is a little later start time, we're asking for five A M, instead of four A M like usual. We made some changes last year, it made it a little bit easier on everyone getting in and out, so we're able to sleep an extra hour. Uh, and we are the Uh, and we are, the festival ends at five o'clock, festival is from ten to the five, ends at five o'clock, so we should be finished and off the square by ten. So, we're not going to midnight like we normally do. Uh, everything else is pretty standard, uh, Ms. Bachelor, you got the certificate of insurance, correct?
Yes, right here. Okay. Do you have any questions to sign? All right, let's do it, all, let's call for a motion to approve the road block permit, do I hear motion? Do I hear second? All right, all, in discussion, question? All the favor letting know about sign of eye? Those opposed and that. Thank you, son.
And it is, not this Saturday, but the next, it's coming up really quick.
Two weeks. All right, let me tell my Christmas before you know it.
This is next.
You been know. All right. So, moving forward, um, road block permit for the hard walk, okay? No, sorry, for the Paul Conroy, First United Methodist Church. Isn't one here for the Methodist Church? All right. Um.
So, so this, this is a road block that, that we request every year. It basically blocks all one block of churches, and that's between Dees College and, um, and Franklin. Between the gymnasium and, and the church building. So, that, that they can use both parking lots for the trigger truck. Usually, police officers are there, participate as well as the fire department, uh, and they turn in their.
Do have the property presented. All right, any questions concerned? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the road block permit for First United Methodist Church. Do I hear motion? All right, do I hear second? If they're moved, popped a second, any questions concerned? Hear none, we call for vote, all the favor letting know about sign of eye?
The AMP, instead of using the AMP, I want to use the, uh, parking lot of the side of the Methodist Church. To have a gathering right there. And the reason I want to do that is that I have a mile walk that we can do from that. That, I'll get y'all look at that. That basically stays off, it'll, it'll stay off the main roads, there's sidewalk everywhere. And, uh, I don't think there'll be a lot of traffic at eight o'clock in the morning anyway. And, uh, so that's about a mile and one, one hundred. So, the plan is to let people walk one lap, if they want to do two, if they want to do three, and basically make it five K to ten. I would love for the city to participate with us. You know, we could be moving on Main, we could be moving with the mayor. Any way to get some, you know, participation. For all of them to participate.
That's a pretty big hill right there. It's a lot of hill. We need to go down that one.
But you know, you're welcome, you can go back. So, anyway, for a good cause, you know, we're doing a lot of planning about infrastructure and all that, but you know, we don't talk about our health.
Yes.
You know, and you gotta have healthy citizens to have anything economic activity, so. You know, so, I think it would be great if we could, uh, have some, some support for this fall.
All right. Now, you have a certificate of insurance. Make sure, uh, if we shared it, ma'am, make sure Chief Evans gets a copy of the map.
I tried to, he didn't, he didn't.
He, he tried to get that.
Okay. There he is, all right.
Make sure he gets a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, any questions concerned with all? Hear none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the road block permit for Main Streets Health Walk. Hard Walk. Do I hear second? If they're moved and popped a second, any questions concerned? Hear none, we call for vote, all the favor letting know about sign of eye? Those opposed and that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so now we're at the point where, uh, Ms. Matthews, do you have, are you a community development?
Sorry, any questions, Ms. Matthews, that's the community development report. The update that I have is on the multimodal display, we have it here, this, she's not here. That anticipated date of having a set of plans together for all two dots certification items in place by late April for early May. And anticipating groundbreaking on this project should be in the summer of twenty twenty four.
Okay. All right, it's been a long road. You get a short mile though, but we gonna keep, we gonna keep pushing. That, that, that's a good journey. Uh, any other grants, anything you want to hit on?
The next, uh, update on the multimodal meeting in November. And still awaiting an announcement on.
Yeah, that's the community development block grant. Okay. All right. So, thank you, Ms. Matthews. All right. So, now we had a financial management report, and Mr. Sherry Bachelor.
Any questions concerned with weapons expenses for the municipal sector?
No questions, no questions here.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the financial management report.
I hear a motion, do I hear a second? All right, the all the favor, any questions concerned? Hear none, all the favor letting know about sign of eye? Those opposed and that. Okay, here's budget amendments, Ms. Bachelor.
Yes, we added some grants to the budget. Three new grants, um, the safety, safety streets for all grants, for ninety three thousand is going to be added. The safety department grant for four thousand will be added. And the Victims Crime International Fund Grant will be added to the budget. For a total of twenty one thousand three hundred forty three for all three budgets, three budgets, I'm sorry.
Point of correction, Ms. Bachelor, two hundred eleven thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, we're begging about two hundred forty three.
Okay. This you can call it. I'm beating some punches. All right, um, um, any questions about this report, we call for motion?
So, so, Ms. Bachelor, the, uh, other than underneath there, then it's contracts, supplies.
That's the outlet.
Yeah.
So, the, uh, by the crime international part, uh, three lines that were here. Contract, supplies, and top level. But they're all involved in the grant. So, it's one grant, and they've broken it down, they've fine it down to three lines of the grant. Contract, supplies, and top level.
So, do you, what do contracts mean?
Um, well, I don't have a line in front of me, but it, 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 it'd be any work that we're going with any other organization will come out of contract law.
So, I guess my, my point is that it will cover up to that grand amount.
That's right.
We won't be having enduring contracts out there.
No, no.
Good question. Any other discussion or questions? So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented, do I hear motion?
Don't move it.
Someone will, do I hear second? Remove the second, are there any questions concerned? Hear none, we call for vote. All the favor letting know about sign of eye? Those opposed and that. Okay. You good, Ms. Bachelor? All right. So, this is a good segue. Before I do my financial management report, finance, the mayor's report, before I do the mayor's report. Uh, we had some people here from One Safe Place. Uh, and we started talking about what the funding goes for, for this, uh, for this grant, and the work that you, we have some new faces. If y'all would just come up front, please introduce yourself. You can be, be free to use the microphone. Chief, you come up here too. Falls under your apartment. Push the, push the button there, the microphone go high. There you go.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kayla Watson, I'm the director at One Safe Place. I was formerly the navigator, and I've returned to take the director's position. We serve victims of crime, so that's, um, anyone that has been through domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, human trafficking, and alderbeast. So, we're there to provide resources to the victims, and that's what we do every day. And this is Ms. Ladon, she's our navigator.
Yes, I just said, I'm the navigator at One Safe Place. I've been working here for a couple months now, so I've had multiple opportunities to work with our clients. Um, so I'm thrilled to be able to work in Haywood County. Um, I grew up here, I was born and raised, I'm in high school, so, um, I think it's a great place for me to be, to be employed. One Safe Place, good community. Yeah, uh, one thing that we would like to remind everyone is October nineteenth is Purple Day. So, let's touch on October nineteenth, um, if you'd like for us to come and take a picture with you all, please, you should give us a call when we come out and see you.
One Safe Place for those who may not, it's a family justice center. One of only two I know in Western City, Jackson and here. Uh, this was a personal project of Chief Devoe and the entire department. Putting this domestic violence partnership together with the Brownsville Police Department, getting a grant to renovate the space, and to pay salaries, it's a partnership with RAP. So, it's a team effort, we appreciate you, thank you, thank you. Chief, you got anything?
It's great to have, but every time you say it, it's a smile, it's a smile.
Domestic violence is one of those, of issues that looms in our community. As our population grows, so will the need for, to address the issues, immediate and long term. So, these, these people are very passionate about the work they do, and show. You don't always hear about it, but when you go to events and hear from the survivors, I won't say the victims, survivors, domestic violence, thank you, very important, thank you. All right, uh, my mayor's report. Uh, there we are. At the proclamation pancake breakfast, uh, signing a proclamation on behalf of RAP. It's, October's Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and, uh, there's Ms. Bess and myself, uh, signing a proclamation, a joint proclamation with the city and county, uh, the state council. Uh, there I am again, uh, at the Hayward High School, well, not Lane College, with the Hayward High School students. Where there's a program called E O G, that we all support, an equal opportunity group. Uh, this takes these students and puts them in a speed round. So, George Thomas, the founder, Brainchild, this organization that's done a lot of different things, he's pivoted. So, now they have students all from different high schools throughout the whole Western City area come to Jackson. They sit in front of professionals like myself and others, doctors, uh, healthcare professionals and everybody, and they do speed rounds. They had to come in, convince, tell them about themselves, they have business cards, what their ambitions were going to be, and how we, how they move forward. So, it's getting, these kids, you know, they're all looking at their phone, so this was an opportunity to make eye contact, to share a level of confidence, and you can see a difference. So, we're very proud to continue to support E O G, and, uh, and to actually be there. And, uh, Crystal did, she said it too. She didn't think she was, she did. Um, there we are together, um, Ford, Ford Motor Company, uh, invited myself and C. Colonel Banks, their center, front and center. Uh, to be a part of foundation, they're our fundraiser, so we had to go to Nashville, uh, sit at Ford's table, to make some good contacts and good communications, turn around and come back. But, it was, it was a good start, it's the first time I've ever been, first time he been, but, uh, we, we represented Brownsville, Tennessee, the best I could. Uh, you know, I already said Nashville, I, I mean, you can't say enough about its success and, and the people were there. The event, the, the, all the community was there, full support, the music was good, um, it was just a really awesome, uh, community event. It's probably the biggest event we do outside of Fall Festival. Uh, you know, Ms. Flag, she, she's the one, you know, she, she, she don't answer, she did. You know, eighty, she just turned eighty-four years old, eighty-four. Let's give her a round of applause. I could do half of what she did before, I could do more than that. So, I'm telling you something, she was on ten too, she was, she was, she couldn't be still till done. All right, set up to, to close, all right? Uh, we did a program here at the city hall, Hispanic heritage month, first time we had an opportunity to recognize our Hispanic community, uh, the month from, uh, September fifteen through October fifteen. It doesn't follow through on the calendar. But we did a program here, uh, you see some of the representatives, uh, young people that represent, uh, Brownsville, Tennessee, through their job capacity, the fire department, police department, central dispatch, of course, the city hall. Um, great event, our entertainment was amazing, great food, it was an internet type situation. And we plan to expand on it next year, making a bigger battle. This year, we didn't want to let it pass without recognizing, uh, Hispanic community. Of course, we talked about the breast cancer awareness walk, we talked to Tom, Mr. Hill, and our, breast cancer is something that we, we recognize in the month of October, you see the banners around town. And we also were doing walk on the fourteenth, um, at nine to eleven A M, we'll be at the L Z Hurley Stadium. We'll be using there, we have people coming out set up, we ask somebody to wear pink, we, we recognize the breast cancer awareness, we're not trying to do raise any money, this is an awareness event. And then, of course, the weather's been absolutely great, so we hope it'll hold out for us on the fourteenth, so, you know, get out there morning and walk and socialize. Um, I had an opportunity to go to Detroit to the Detroit Auto Show, also had some opportunities to meet with some of the Ford executives about community. What they, they want to know, Mayor, what are the people in your community saying about this project? What, what, you know, you're there, what keeps you overnight? Housing, housing. So, if we can figure out how to solve this housing issue, everything else will take with itself. Well, the auto show was good, but they had, they rushed me in, rushed me out, when I had the opportunity to go out to the world, of course. And this was the day of the U A W demonstration. So, I'm talking to the Uber driver, I'm talking to the guys on the street, I'm talking to the executives, I'm, I mean, you know, they, I just show up, so they don't know who I am, right? So, people give me funny looks. I'm just, I'm just a little old guy from Brownsville, Tennessee, you know, I just came here, uh, so I can get in this business. An opportunity to tour the Rouge plant where they make the F one fifties. Every one of them make their, their plants, quality control, and the way they, I was super impressed, they produce a truck every fifty-six seconds. They have a line that rolls, you station at fifty-six seconds, complete their task, and it rolls on to the next, then to the paint, you know, comes in from the paint shop and stamping. Um, I didn't get a chance to see the license, where they make the license, was all there on the ground from Rouge, which is the cornerstone, um, manufacturing and assembly facility. Uh, left there, came back, went to the E C D conference in Chattanooga, uh, great attendance, you know, it was a one day event now, the networking was great. And time, opportunity to talk about grants, um, had opportunity to talk to David Ross, who's a friend of mine, the director of T B I, by helping us here, anything where he can. Uh, so it was, it's a great networking opportunity. As you know, I've been appointed by the governor to serve on the Veterans Home Board, I left Chattanooga and went to Murfreesboro for that meeting. We talked about some issues there with generators, uh, how do we turn the ship around in, in the way it could cope? So, this was a very involved, intense meeting, but the work is well worthwhile, makes me be humble. Uh, the facility did receive approval, uh, on the audit, the inspection, so all facilities are up and running, looking good. Well, Ms. Bachelor, I went to West Star Corporate Sponsorship Dinner at the Southwest Human, Southwest Development District. Uh, this was just an opportunity to meet, to meet the chancellor, I knew chancellor from, uh, University of Tennessee at Martin. Um, he was going around trying to be people engaged, and we had the chance, opportunity to meet him and talk to him about what the future of West Tennessee and UT Martin looks like. We were in attendance of the N W A C Freedom Fund banquet, uh, which was a great event, we had Speaker Bishop Thomas, who was a former minister here at, uh, Farmers Chapel Church, was a keynote speaker. Uh, it was, it was a good event, very well attended, corporate sponsorship from Ford, T B A, Wall Bridge, uh, Brownie Energy Authority, no, I'm sorry, not Brownie, the, the, N South Bank. And Conner Real Estate were all key sponsors for the Freedom Fund banquet. Uh, and then, of course, I, I attended the Southwest Development District's annual meeting, which was done in the farmers market and casual setting. But I had opportunity to talk with some of the engineers, the head of the, table of engineers, that'll be working on some of the projects through Christian Smith. Uh, they, I've met him before, but sitting at the table, I'm trying to understand the population growth numbers, there's a brand new study out, that, uh, I had a chance to kind of discuss some things and invite the Brownsville so. We, you know, there's a lot of planning going on, um, but everybody has a lane, we was asking about staying it, and Jonathan not. Um, because L R K has been boots on the ground. For how long y'all been in the community working?
For a year and a half.
Year and a half, I knew it was closer to two years. So, the interim, the design guidelines, the land use plan, it was going to see coming forward, you know, we're going to have some, some light pack of work, which we approve, and we're going to stand on. Uh, and then Christian Smith has come in, they said they're going to do a transportation piece, you know, so I'm asking these questions and asking, what, what, what does everybody fit? You know, so, a lot of planners, a lot of engineers involved, but it's all going to come together. We all, we're going to be transparent about it, we appreciate your work and the commitment that's being done by each individual, so we just going to stay on point, after two years passed announcement. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain the reports from the office, office review. Office vision? Office table? Okay. Any departmental reports? Anybody, have anything?
Chief. Got a couple of things, uh, just.
Come on up here, come on, see. Got the new patch on, have y'all seen the new patch?
It was actually designed by one of our guys at the department, so, actually, the patches also from sign of eye, it was all. I did even, it's just a couple of things, just for public information. Uh, the world brought a bunch of things here, I've been doing this for thirty years, I had something come up today that had me stumped. Uh, I was called to check out apparatus, this, a young man from Texas will be flying a motor parrot. Actually, it's a, some kind of apparatus with a motor on the backpack, with a parachute. Uh, we checked with F A A, he's, he's, uh, any way to watch to fly this thing? The only thing they require him to do is call MedCom the wings and let him know he's flying, so this thing is, look like something off a movie. But he'll fly late in the afternoon, or either early. or either early sunrise in the morning, he will not fly at noon today. Uh, so I called Cotton Beers to kind of quip this guy, he's a pilot, because I was just lost on it, and uh, brought the sheriff in on it too. But he took off today from out here somewhere close to east side, he found another spot. But he's in legal rights, we checked with the F A A, so we started getting calls, you know, we're getting, we get calls with crop dust, so it's a little bit different. So we got that straightened out, so he's out flying now and probably be back in before it get too dark. Uh, it's different. Second thing we had, so we can kind of debunk all this, we have a fatality uh, on Elizabeth Street, got a call of a house on fire. Uh, and it was a general inside, which uh, one officer went in and the guy was deceased. Uh, rumors floating around, it was a homicide, killed by fire and all this stuff. Uh, we're thinking right now from medical advantage part of that, we called us, and he was cooking, and that's what happened. Uh, and also, I like the fire department kind of level with him, and also take it over.
Come on, Chief.
Hey, uh, hey, Chief, what's that guy, is he, does he have a purpose or display?
It's it's recreational, we actually, you know, actually, our drone program got more restrictions than this guy, I mean, it's it's just like the sky does, they can say a county, I mean, it's, you know, the only difference is they have to use their plane, he's, I take off in thirty feet, he's gone. And we asked him, this this Simmons, how how he's going. It's different, so we're starting to follow him. But he will not follow houses and all that type of stuff, he tried uh, fly in this country, strange highways, different part.
All right, Chief?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to remind everyone, this is Fire Convention Week, National Fire Convention Week, and we would like everyone to check their smoke detectors, make sure they're working, and if you don't have one, please contact us. We will come to your house and we will install a smoke detector for you. We do not believe the smoke detector led this individual losing his life today. But I did notice going through this house that this smoke detector did not work, and it would be a shame if it does come back that it could have saved his life, but it didn't. So I just want to remind everyone to contact us, we were out installing a smoke detector today. We don't have a lot left, but the state will supply us with them, I'll contact them, get us some more, we will come out and install them for you, just call our office. It's a state buy program, and we're glad to do it, we'll keep you progress and tips, speak to you about fire safety, and a small thing, install a smoke detector also, so it's something we love doing, getting to see our community. I hate that the individual lost his life today, and I hope it's not because his smoke detector is not working. Is this the most important thing you can have in your home?
Amen. Thank you both, thank you. All right, thank you.
I know it's been a long meeting, I'm just gonna take a second. I wasn't here at the meeting last month because I was in Knoxville at Governor's Tourism uh, conference. And I hope y'all had a chance to look at your packet, and you will realize that Haywood County has moved in statewide ranking for tourism to fifty-seven, we were at sixty-two. In West Tennessee, we're ten out of twenty-one. We went from seventeen million dollar economic impact in twenty twenty-one to nineteen point four million in twenty twenty-two. So that's a thirteen percent increase. I I was hopeful we were gonna have an increase because I had seen the hotel motel numbers for last year, but this was a great surprise, and your breakdown in your packet will show you where our strengths are. It broke down through the five categories, so uh, if y'all have any questions about that, I hope you'll call and talk to me about it, and we can go into more detail, but I just wanted to, to make that public.
Awesome, thank you, I think that's great, then. Um, also, this time I want to recognize, you could just come forward so we can see you all, now here what kind of leadership classes here? Any inter members in the leadership class? Yeah, come on up here. Just take them off, just you could just introduce yourself, tell us what you do every day, any comments you want to make.
Well, I'm a student, uh, work with the ground, public works department, so gang sanitation issues, industry issues, whatever, don't hesitate to call us.
I'm Karita Taylor, I work with Safe for Children, Community Engagement Coordinator for Haywood County School.
I'm Will Cavina, I'm the labor union, uh, set up right next to the sheriff's office. I do workforce development, so I've been trying to recruit, train some of these young, bright people from the area, and uh, government's infrastructure, so glad to be here.
I'm Heather Hardy, I farm in the San Antonio Village and Forte Deer Communities in the north part of the county. I miss the rural. She can't ride the track.
I'm Madeline Elrod, I work at Inside Bank, I'm a customer service rep.
And Sally, I can tell the type of work that Browns Energy Authority, um, customer service. If you have any questions about the building, I'm when you get to call.
Oh, yeah, all right, eight eight four five seven seven two. Thank you all, thank you, let's give a round of applause. As by the Tennessee Code, entertain, if you do not have a requirement, that at any time we have a public meeting, that we do have an opportunity for anyone to get up, they have two minutes, many comments, a question they may want to make concerning any items on the agenda, we're limited to the agenda items. So this is now your opportunity to uh, tell us about this, what do we need to do, laws of extension to agenda. Is anybody like to make any public comment? Okay, maybe we do a good job. All right, well, thank you all for coming, um, at this time I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? All right, all the papers letting them know about the sign of eye? Everybody in favor, get them go home.